I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free will of our which is in hand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's begin to start up with roll call. John Estrich.
Here.
Chuck Campbell. Bridget Hayes here. Earl Moore.
Here.
Curtis Ward. We do have a quorum of three. So let's start off with the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting.
I make the motion we approve the minutes.
John made a motion to approve the minutes from July 17th, 2023, regular meetings. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. We'll just both join in when I can. Oh, okay. Next, we'll move on to the approval of claims and payroll. Claims are a total of $465,683.87. And payroll is... Oh. Payroll is a total of $65,125.51, with overtime of $290.67. I undertake a motion to approve claims and payroll as presented.
I make the motion.
John made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Earl, second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. First up is Matt Worth from Commonwealth Engineers.
Good evening, council. As mentioned, I am Matt Worth, Commonwealth Engineering Business Development Manager for them. We are a civil environmental engineering firm located here in Indiana that has been around since 1974, specializing in water, wastewater, and groundwater. Well, briefly here, my associate, our engineer, Rachel Runne, Runney, from Commonwealth as well. She's well versed in our topic tonight, and it's called PFAS. Been having multiple conversations with Tim in the utility department over the last couple of months on a topic of the town. And the best way is to be initial of our PFAS or PFAS. And the easiest way to do this is just look right in front of you instead of me trying to pronounce that butchered. So Brookville has been participating in some voluntary testing of their water systems for various chemicals. The state of Indiana has identified PFAS as a chemical that really needs to be paid attention to. And it's basically almost everything we touch, breathe, or see. So but from the water standpoint, Brookville, it was identified that it's in Brookville's water as it is in probably every system in the state. However, I'm here tonight to discuss an opportunity with you that might be beneficial, and we feel could be. But the state has put some grant money behind testing for PFAS in several communities around the state. And Brookville, Brookville has been identified as one of them. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Rachel and let her explain what we're about, the testing process and what it is.
Thanks, Matt. So I'm Rachel Runney. I am, my team at Commonwealth are, I think, is on drinking water. And one of the issues we really try to handle communities with is upcoming regulations and getting in front of those to make sure we can meet all of these new requirements. So as Matt mentioned, the federal EPA actually has a proposed regulation for PFAS, which they are hoping to have enforced by the end of the year, meaning starting potentially next year, we'll have to start testing and reporting for PFAS. The requirements that are rolled in need to test and monitor for it as well as public notice requirements. So the implication maybe is if it's in the water, you'll have to send out public notice similar to some other parameters that Ida makes us test for. Couple of years ago, in 2021, Ida began voluntarily testing some groundwater communities in the state. They're hoping to get through the entire state. I think they're on phase three now. And like Matt said, many communities participated, and many of them came back with positive test results for PFAS. These are known as forever chemicals because they're man-made synthetic chemicals that essentially don't go away. They don't ever go away to be captured and removed from the water. And you can hear all kinds of studies about them. The health, there's negative health effects, and none of them are known. There's suspected to be increased risk for cancer, liver damage, lots of other negative health effects. But what the state has done in response to all of these, all of these testing that people participated in, the state of Indiana, through the Indiana Finance Authority, State Revolving Loan Fund, has reached out, and we reached out to them, and they said, yes, if you want to start doing these grants. They are, they have reached out to the federal EPA to access grant money for testing here in Indiana for PFAS. So the grant currently would cover testing, it would cover including pilot testing. So the running samples are just not cheap. It's not something you're going to take down to your local lab and get tested. You have to set it, right now, Illinois is the closest testing facility I could hope soon, or last one in Indiana, much closer. But it'll cover the cost for taking samples, getting them tested routinely, and then putting together a plan, be it for some kind of removal process or pilot testing. Because there's over 10,000 of these PFAS chemicals, you really need to identify what those are before you put together a plan for removing it. And this grant the state is applying to the federal government for would cover all of that. And they're, right now, they're phasing it. So year one, they want the grant to cover the testing and the planning. And then there would be a year two or three to access all of these funds that are coming from the bill of money, the bipartisan reimbursement money. So there's two more years in it after this year. And that would cover actually constructing the improvements to treat this chemical in drinking water. So right now, all that the state, the State Revolving Loan Fund is asking for is, does the community wish to participate in this grant program? And if so, we will apply for these funds on their behalf. And there's no, with this program, they're hoping to implement it similar to some of the other grant programs where there's no matching, no, no waiting that the town needs to do other than work with, work with a consultant and a state on putting together a plan for this and getting the test taken. So really, if, if you guys are interested in participating in the grant, who are, with the operator, you know, just respond to the state and let them know that if the funds being available, yes, this is something we're interested in participating in.
How much is the grant?
It is, the state has applied. I don't know exactly how much the state will apply for, but they actually worked with us and I think a couple of their engineers on putting together proposals. And each one is good in a very good community. So we would assemble the actual project costs after, after they've received funds. So it could be anywhere from a couple thousand dollars to a couple million dollars, anywhere in between. I, I think the state has asked for a lot of money, in the millions of dollars for this. Because this is a, the state views this as a very important topic that needs to be addressed in Indiana.
So who, do you know, because I mean, I'm looking at this report with all the PFAS numbers on it, or, you know, whether it's detected or not. Who paid for all this, or who did all this?
I think all of the, the boner testing was through Ida, through the state environmental agency. And I will say that, like Matt alluded to, this is not something that you need to drinking water. This is, this contamination is everywhere. It's just, the drinking water is the most direct, we ingest it. So it's the most direct and impact and that's where the state is starting, starting there.
So I, when I read about this, that this is, this chemical's been around for quite some time. So what, what, what has happened recently that's made this such a push recently?
Well, I don't know exactly, but I do know that about every five years, the EPA does huge massive studies. They have contaminant lists. And from those lists of potentially hazardous chemicals, they select a few to study and potentially propose regulations on. Some of the other ones that were on this last list, TTHM, that was several rounds ago, and we all have to test for those now. Disperation by products, as well as maybe this was on the latest list. So I think, I don't know for sure, but I would guess that it just kind of rose to the forefront because of the prevalence of it.
I do think Flint, Michigan played a role in some of this. Not necessarily PFAS, but certainly putting these chemicals on, on the radar.
Putting drinking water
Especially in drinking water in municipal systems. I think that certainly didn't hurt. And I think then you saw a lot of money come out of the federal government at that point. But again, it's a, it's a very low, low risk to the town in terms of any kind of obligation financially. But yet, it shows you guys are being proactive. Tim and his department, his, his testing is being proactive to keep Brookville citizens, you know, as safe as they can be with their water system.
So are these chemicals, I mean, you said they're everywhere. Are they, I mean, now we're looking at testing and getting ready out of the water, but are they doing anything about the fronting, like stopping it from being used? Or, I mean, I don't know how it gets into the water, but do they stop, I mean, where is it coming from? And that, I guess that's, that is the question.
It's, it's in a lot of the chemicals that are used for water proof and Teflon. And it's even in, like, fabric, anything you buy, like athletic heat is going to have it. When we initially reached out to the state to say, hey, you've done this testing, you're causing alarm in a lot of our communities, what are we going to do about it? They said, well, we should stop the source. And I said, okay, go to those factories or whoever and do that. But that's not something that we on the, you know, water consumer side can control, or you're penalizing us by making us do these tests. So I, I hope that they're, they are working on stopping these. I've heard some, just, you know, on the news, some large companies like 3M are trying to stop use of it. It's just so ingrained and
It's different.
Yeah. Teflon pans, what makes it not stick is PFAS.
Thank you.
Not to scare anybody, but
Maybe just, maybe just ask if, if it's okay, that's as far as no financial commitment or anything from the town. But if Commonwealth can continue to work with Tim and his group on pursuing this.
Tim, do you have?
Could we have a vote from the board to allow them to pursue the grant and to work with monitoring this PFAS?
Yeah, true. John, do you have any?
You need a motion.
Yeah. Do you have any other questions? No. We need a motion.
Okay. I have a motion as we go up with the grant for the test.
Uh, is that, John made a motion to allow Commonwealth to go ahead and go up after the state grant to test for PFAS. Is there a second?
A second.
Earl, second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Next is Rosemary Stern from New Mersies.
Hi, good evening. I'm here with New Mersies. I'm not a lot more familiar with it, but the town has placed the old firehouse on Coop Street to our nonprofit organization. And we serve, we host every Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday evening to people that come and are in need. We also have a paper pantry on the third Saturday each month from 10 to noon, where people can get items that they cannot purchase on food scanners. And people that are on fixed income are having a hard time, you know, stretching their dollars. So what we give them at the food pantry, or at the paper pantry, every month, they get toilet paper, paper towels, trash bags, and a box of cleaning assistance. That's a standard that they get every month. Then the next month, they get the standard plus hand soap and then dish soap. And then the next month, they, every three months, they get something different along with the standard orphanage. We give out laundry detergent every three months. And we give out approximately, I prepare for 150 bags to be given out. And we give out, the most we've given out since February 2022 is 139 bags. And my question is, I was wondering, and we appreciate the lease of the building very much, in having the three separate rooms, one for the food storage, and one for the paper pantry, and the other room in an office. But my question is, I was wondering if we could construct a storage unit in our bay area that we, you're allowed to have, approximately six by six to the height of a door that we want to, like, to the office. What now is brought up at the meeting, since then, some of the board members feel like that maybe if we cleaned up the paper paper room in the office room, then maybe we wouldn't need that. I still wanted to come forward to find out if it's okay if we did that, construct a room in our bay area.
Tim?
There's, there's one room there. I don't see, it's not going to be there anymore, so I see a problem there.
And then the other thing is, we wanted to change out the floor rest of lights into LED lighting in the dining area and in the kitchen. And that's, I mean, we're not asking for anything from the town or anything. We're, we're going to take on all of these expenses ourselves.
You're just asking for permission to do it.
Please.
You're just asking for permission to get it done.
Yes, sir.
Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion when you grant your wishes.
A second.
All in favor? Motion, all, all opposed? Motion passed. We'll remove the storage unit and LED lights. Thank you. Next is Carla Hacker with the SEI Ready Sewer Project.
Thanks for allowing me to be on the agenda. I appreciate that. I'm going to direct my questions if I can to you, President Hayes, and if you have, need assistance in answering those, maybe refer to the other members. And we know that there's a great meetup on the hill for the sewer, and we are forming a sewer to be, to come up the hill. We have been following that progress very closely, attending the meetings or listening on Zoom. There's some confusion coming from the updates provided by the redevelopment committee and the project, sewer project subcommittee. And because the final decisions regarding the grant belong to BTC, as president of the group, can I ask you some questions and you clarify what your interpretation is regarding the meeting? We've heard running from point A to point B, and hookups as many in between for free, or running from point A, B, C, and D, and not with anyone else? What is your interpretation?
I'm pretty sure we're supposed to, the money is, I mean, we applied for the money to go from two develop, it was three originally, but it ended up just being two, which is Dave White and D and G, I think it's called, and S and W, which is Curtis Ward's Development there on Visigo Road. That's my understanding, unless that's not right.
Okay, well, what about the hooking up in between for free?
So the hooking up in between is, is all based off of what the contractors come back with the bids. It is my understanding, and if I'm wrong, please someone correct me. It's my understanding that they can bid on this project as long as they get it from A to B. And if there's extra money to hook up people in between, that would be the most ideal situation, obviously. That's what, that's what the application was, was based off of, is hooking up everyone in between. But I, I believe that there's, if, if we get a proposal and it simply only says from A to B, and that is it, and they can't hook anyone up for the 4.5 million, then it's still a valid bid that we can consider if we want to.
How is that?
But, but there is no guarantee that people are going to get hooked up. It's going to be based off of what the contractor, how the contractor can stretch that money.
Okay. So if you say point A to point B, and if there's extra money hooked up?
That is my understanding.
Okay. All right. The development is to provide these 80 housing units to high schools to move to Franklin County, focusing on drawing school with children. Or they don't even have to build one house to comply with their grant. They just have to have the institution do so, and that house doesn't comply. Or this money in that house can help save the schools by bringing families to Franklin County. Do they have to build up there or not? They don't.
Do they have to build? So they submitted a letter of, how am I saying, letters, how I understand it?
Nobody could force them.
Okay, so the grant money can run a sewer and?
Like a bridge to nowhere?
Yep.
Apparently.
Yep.
All right. Let's see, other questions, as of this moment in time, as of today, the BTC will not require any resident to hook onto the sewer line if it passes their home. Hook up is completely voluntary, and if the funds are available through the grant, hook up will be at no cost to the resident.
That is, again, my understanding, yes.
Okay. However, the resident decides to hook up after the contractor passes their home, anytime in the future, the cost will be on the resident.
That is also my understanding.
Okay. After the initial line is installed, and any gate in the future, and by any future council, the residents could be required to hook up regardless of their wishes. Hook up could be completely voluntary and required by any future BTC leaders. In other words, after your, your council is, is moved on, and we have a different council, they can do something different.
Yep.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Yes.
It's a political, they always say sewer is always very political, but
Yes. Town, town sewer works may require hookups. It's not a shout, it's a may. And that is set by statute. So even if this town council were to say, we're never going to require hookups, the state statute would govern more so than a local ordinance would. And so town sewer works do have, may require hookups.
Okay. I'm asking because former president Ward said, no, future council could change anything. So that's not true.
Are you shocked by that?
That's an, that is an incorrect statement.
Okay.
That's, that's set by state statute. Regional sewer districts and municipal sewer works have the, the ability to force hookups if there's a sewer line within 300 feet of the property line. But it's, again, it's a may, it's not a shout.
Okay. All right. Will the BTC decide what type of system they're looking for before they ask the engineers to bid on the project? So they can all be looking at the same thing. Okay, so if you're not going to do that, then these two staffs are going to, that's probably getting a 10th of a five dollar bucket and garbage bag. Again, do you understand what I'm saying? I think that everybody should be bidding on the same project.
I, I think they are.
The way I understand this, the way that I understand this works and build, you can help me out with this, is we pick out a firm. They, they make, different firms make up presentations to us. We pick out the firm we want. That firm comes up with a plan, or plans, and then we decide which plan we want. Is that correct, Bill?
That's, that's correct. It will be a, and I think your attorney Andy may be able to chime in, but they use the term build, design, engineer, whatever. And so once this request for proposals put out, those people, one guy might say, I'm going to dig a ditch and do it my way. One guy's going more different direction. One guy's going to use pressurized system, one guy's going to use a different system. They're going to throw those proposals at you with the intentions, they understand they've got 4.5 million. I think the request for proposal says 4 million, and it actually, give or take. And so they would give you that, they would give you an estimate with a design, engineer, project in play. And then it would go from there.
So, hold on, Bill. So when you pick the engineer then, does, does he, 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 when you're considering their proposals, are their, those proposals already include the system that they want, right? I mean, like, for instance, we're not going to have, we're not going to pick an engineer that says, well, I could do a chafe system, or I could do a gravity feed system for 4 million. If I did chafe, I could do it from A to B and hook up all the subsidiaries. But if I do a gravity fit, I can only go from A to B on the main line, and that's it, but what do you want? Could that happen?
That could. I believe that could happen. And then when that committee looks at that, they could, it's, her question is then whether people can be hooked up along the way. It's going to be a consideration, it's going to be taken into place to the maintenance aspect of it, the cost aspect of it. And at the end of the day, is there room to help assist people in hooking up to it? I think that's a factor in the whole thing. It's kind of unique from the fact that some places will do what we call engineer. They come up with an engineer plan, and then they would put that plan out for bid. In our particular case, this is kind of, I want to say it's unique, it's a way it's starting to be done more. It keeps everybody, I want to say honest to a certain degree, because you're, you have to engineer, design, and build this thing. That comes in an expense of probably about 50,000 bucks to engineer this thing. You're going to have to pull out of your pocket, there's a good chance you are going to get the job.
And my understanding is, when we pick a firm to do this, they will just show us what, what about the firm? We aren't, we aren't choosing a system with the firms come to us, correct?
So what we would be, and it's on the agenda, is the request for proposals and qualifications. So the qualifications would be, here's what operator our firm is, and here's all the stuff we've done. But the proposal, they're going to look and say, okay, they've been awarded just under 4.5 million. Here's what they want to do, and they're going to come with a proposal that, in our opinion, this is the best way to sewer what we want to sewer. And so it's going to be, that they're, the, what we're, what the RFPQ would be asking for would be a proposal for the project based on the amount of funds available, as well as why, why the, their firm should be stuck in their qualification.
So that choice is going to be done by the RFPQ committee?
The RFPQ committee would receive or would review any of the proposals that are submitted, and then would come to this board for, with a recommendation. The ultimate decision would be up to this board.
To pick the engineer with the proposal that, so we're not going to, so there is, so there, there wouldn't be a time where an engineer came with two different proposals for two different systems?
They may. I mean, they may give you options. You know, and this, it's, this is not, it's trending this way. You know, I did, I'm doing, in the middle of a sewer project in Marchburg that involved ready funds, but we did not do it this process. So this is actually my foray, foray into this type of process. But, I mean, they, they could come and give you an option, with options. And the discussion about, is there any money available to hook people up or not? And that may be options that are taken into consideration.
It's my understanding also that if they come with something, we don't have to accept it. We can start all over again. We don't have to accept what they bring to us if we don't like it.
But we're on a time constraint, so if we say no, it may be other.
That, yeah, it depends on how much time there is, if there's enough time to get another proposal, ask for the proposal or something. But it's not a have to situation. We don't have to choose that. We can put it out again if there's enough time.
So these firms are going to spend a lot of money to So these firms are going to spend a lot of money to produce this R F P Q with a proposal to us? They're gonna spend their own money, their own dime? Wow. It's a great process for us, I guess.
And to the next point, the grant agreement is valid through August 31st, 2026, basically three years from now. And then all the ready funds have to be expended by December 31st, 2026.
I, I like that, that you don't have to accept it, because you don't know, you know, until it gets up there in front of you. But this is important, we want the process to be fair to all contractors. Fair then means fair to the people. We are against any backdoor deals, they are necessarily what's best for all, and questioning the reasons behind some of the big dollar deals. And calling out those who don't wanna go around the rules because they're being selfishness. We are fine with the B T C overseeing the project, and we respectfully ask that you question the others to those overseeing these committees to make sure you are all on the same page. And then I wanna go further on that. And on June 23rd, my husband and I submitted a formal request to remove Charles Campbell from the sewer project committee. Um, it seems hard, but of course, as most times, not, depending, not every local leader's like this, but the request is completely ignored. Um, the issue, our, our concerns were no surprise. There, there's been no secret to the fact that our land and tax dollars are good enough for some, that our opinions, the one we want, do not matter. Not saying you, I'm saying that that's our way for some. This brings me directly to the things that we had a problem with Campbell on. He owns a property on West of Horn recently, began excavation activity there. He intends to build there, sell the home, he intends to make a profit from the sale. He's the only member of the committee that can profit from the installation of the sewer line, and therefore should not be on the committee. There have been at least three instances within the past year where Mr. Campbell has displayed aggressive behavior. In fact, in the most public case, allegedly assaulting a police officer, and still is still in the court system after several continuances. This is a serious charge to most folks, and I take it lightly, in respect of the police and the sheriff. He is confrontational and intimidating to those in the audience who disagree with him during the B T C meetings. The most recent incident involved arrested on the hill, where our document was not shown, it was inferred. The aggressive behavior, bullying, abusive language coming from someone who's supposed to be a representative of the town council and the town of Brookville is a huge concern. We don't want, need this person sitting on the committee that will make important decisions for the residents on the hill. He has stated repeatedly to us that he does not represent us, and does not have to answer to us. With that being said, why would we want him on that committee? Why? Why would she, as the council, want him there if you want, if you wanna give the impression that you're willing to work with us, care about our concerns, and will take us seriously? And I ask for you to please seriously consider removing him from that committee. Please. And if you want, want validation of that incident on the hill, there's been a report filed with the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you.
Where's you go?
Okay, next, well, uh, next, uh, let's move on to the S E I ready grant, R F P Q. So...
So, um, Nate, Nate, right, the lead leader, please, this is coming from the lead leader that you've been working with?
Nick.
Nick, thank you. Uh, has been working on the R F P Q, uh, there was a small edit that I have, um, that he implemented. There are some, we would need to highlight who would be the contact person. Um, the, any proposed firms shall not contact council members, S E I ready board members, members of the review committee, or any other going body of any R F P Q process other than the council's resident representative listed below. All comments and questions to their R F P Q should be directed at callers. So we would need a name, email, and telephone number for some incidents.
Not someone on the R F P Q, and not a council member?
It's, uh, other than the person listed below. So it could be someone from the town, someone from the committee, but that would be the only person that they should talk to.
Oh, okay. Oh, I mean, I would like Tim to do that if... Like, you guys, like, oh, is that okay, Tim? Okay, I mean, that'd be okay, Tim?
And then, John, we kind of talked timeframe, like, when we got together. We need a date that any questions would be submitted by to Tim. And then, um, Tim can then relay those to the committee, and then we'll find an answer. And, uh, then, there's a date for the questions to be posted on the town post site. And then ultimately, we would need a date for the, the, um, proposals to be due by.
Yes, Bill?
I just wanted to clarify, if Tim takes that position, can he still be on the, on the committee?
My read of it is yes, because it's not saying that the...
We want him on the committee.
Yeah.
Maybe delegating him to that was, that email information of that contact person would be...
It says, shall not contact other than the council representatives listed below. So the council wants somebody from that committee to be the representative that handles the questions from that council.
That's good, clarification, thank you.
So, it may be best to say, when do we want the proposals to be due by? And then to work our way backwards, maybe, right? Because that gives you the end date, then you can figure out, okay, when we wanna have questions posed by, and when we wanna repost them. Um, so to, to take into consideration is you would need time for the firms to prepare your proposals, and, and then time for any questions to be asked and answered, time for the committee to review the proposals and come up with a recommendation, and then ultimately bring that recommendation to the municipal, to the town council. I mean, right now, it's August 7th.
You got, you got a recommendation?
I, I, that would be more of a technical, I, I mean, I wouldn't have any idea how long it would take for them to put proposals together. I mean, it's a four and a half million dollar project, it's a big project. I, I don't, I don't either. Tim, bud? I was thinking three months, pretty, pretty quick, early six, so...
Andy, you had the opportunity, Andy, to see the timeline that Nick was referring to.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Because that pushes it up, I think.
Right, yeah, he isn't there about eight days.
That, that only gives him about 30 days. It's October 1st, it's actually shows one of his examples. September 29th that they would be in, and I think it was because we were looking at there's requirements by state statutes, like how many ti, how many times next we put the newspaper, and how that process goes, which steps us out about 30 plus days, because this meeting fell on Monday. Paper won't run till next Wednesday, a week from then, or whatever. We looked at all those options. And so I think it was October 1st at the earliest, let's just say, and so could be pushed back beyond that if we think there's a need to take one of the 30 days.
Yeah, his proposed calendar was August 7th, council approved the monverge of the R F P Q. Levins sent notes to the paper, notes runs in the paper on the 16th and 23rd, and then, um, responses due by the 15th, September, so it'll be next month. And then the R F P Q committee formally recommends by October 7th. And makes the recommendation, and also the first meeting in October.
That's October 7th.
Yes, I, I was thinking there's something else when I said, um, a month would be, for the R F P Q, a month would be okay. I had engineering.
That's wrong, actually, the other place.
And I'm not sure if it would be extended if we didn't receive any type of, or if we immediately received a phone call and said, we can't come up with this in that short period of time, whether council could revisit the deadline or not. But I think getting it to October 1st was what I was gonna shoot for the last, well, I was suggesting 30 days. And then, if we discovered that to be an issue, I wanted to know, we have the ability to go back and revisit that.
Well, wouldn't we just rebid it? I mean, we just did this for the preserving industry grant. We got bids in that we didn't, that were, we didn't accept, so we just rebid it for another 30 days, and another 30 days, so that was, I mean, it was, I mean, our grant administrator did all the notices, but it's just the same notice.
This is different than that.
It's different, okay.
Yes, it is different, so, um, chances are we can make it a couple of, you know. Yeah, I know, I think October 1st would be a good date, because they just have to prove that they have the, the ability to do, do a project like this. That's basically all it could be. And, and have to show references in other projects that they've done of this same magnitude.
Well, and they'll be submitting like a general proposal, right?
Well, when you look at that timeline, it says the scheduling period begins after the selected offer. So that, that says the design budget and financing terms will be determined during that period.
That's, I, I...
So then...
I really think we just go qualifications originally, and then we pick the firm, then they give the scoping. That's how I understand it, then they bring us the project. That's how I understood our last meeting.
Yeah, it's, they're gonna bring the proposal in their, their qualification. I mean, it's, it's different than if it was, you're doing a gravity sewer project. We're at, we're doing a sewer project, and there's a lot of different ways to do a sewer project. So that's all gonna come into the proposals. So were you saying October 1st to have them submitted?
No, no, to have to submit their qualifications. I think it's a two-step process, that's how I keep away from the B. It's two steps, they show us their qualifications, we pick one, then they figure out how to spin them out. That's how I understand it.
That's my understanding also. The, the R F P Q needs to be written, because the way the R F P Q, that Nick's been ordering on is written is, it's a request for proposals and qualifications, it's a package deal.
Well, his, his, his timeline states two steps.
Right, so, so, you're gonna get, you're gonna get proposals in, and then say, we recommend doing a gravity fit, or we recommend doing a chafe, and, and it's gonna cost this, and it's gonna cost that. And you're ultimately gonna select somebody, and then they're gonna start on the design, budget, and financing.
Okay, I, I didn't understand it way, look at this, I don't understand it that way, because, uh, the committee on 10/2, the committee makes the recommendation, town council, to begin the scoping period, and then 10/3, the scoping period begins with selection, offer. The design budget and financing terms will be determined during this period. Design, we can't choose a design if the scoping, before the scoping begins, because that's part of the scoping.
Right, I think what it is, is, well, these firms are going to say, our proposal is a chafe system or a gravity system, and then whatever firm you wanna go with, once you select them, then they're gonna... Oh, actually designing that system, okay.
And they will have a dollar figure in mind, because it's in the request, it shows a number of 4 million. So they're gonna know that if it's a $6 million, it's as close as they get. They're not, they're not coming in with anything, all of it, to your point, John, so... But I do, I see that under, if you guys have seen the request for proposals, under project scope, uh, and through the scoping process, but it does say that the scope of the budget of the project is not yet determined, although the final scope is anticipated to be approximately 4 million. And that's in that request for proposal, so...
So that means the R F P Q committee will pick an engineer based off of the system that they designed in their proposal?
My, my, my vision of this thing, and I may be wrong too, but my vision was, is that these things would come in on October 1st, and that committee would look at those items at hand. They can have a discussion amongst themselves, and they can say there's four of them, and they can say two of them don't meet qualifications, and throw them right out, and then riddle it down to two, in fact. They can interview those people, they could ask them to come in, and then they would come back to your board and say, we are recommending you pick A because X Y, because of this conversation, because of whatever, because they can hook up 50 people, because they can come up for free, because they can, you know, whatever the case may be, but the committee would be looking at that. They would be the one who would be making the recommendation. Reminds me of our area planning and zoning. You come before the A P C, they make the recommendations, the commissioners, commissioners make the decision. This committee would be like the A P C, who's looking at the circumstances at hand and bringing it back to their board. And answering your questions, and if there's questions they can't answer, going back to the table, getting those answers, you can come back, I think, so...
So is there, uh, is the council then allowed to interact with the R F P Q committee during this process? Andy? Or is it like a secret, secret meeting?
No, I think, uh, I mean, you just, you wanna always be focused on not having three together at the same time.
Of course, of course.
So if you have two members of this council on your commit, on your committee, then you wouldn't be able to have a third person.
Right, but the, yeah, I got you, okay.
And, and John, I see what you're saying as far as the R F P Q committee makes the recommendation to town council to accept that, but then the agreement isn't actually done. I see what you're saying, that it is the, is the next phase down here. It says upon conclusion, so, so I see what you're saying.
But I mean, the whole purpose of, I mean, an R F P Q is a request for proposal and qualification. So they should be giving us a proposal with their qualification that would hopefully help us decide which one.
This is my first time, I'm old, but I'm working this, so...
So am I, John.
It's like my, the full project. It was their proposal with their qualifications is what I see.
Yes, that's what the title of it is, yeah.
Yeah.
I think so, it's...
Not that they're giving you their proposal, but, um, they're qualified to do what they're being asked to do, I guess, in this.
Right.
And Mary McCarty did say that she would leave the committee on the score enough of the qualifications, yeah.
Okay.
And I've seen, I know that there's a thing when you ask that question, Ms. Hayes, but the, the council may refuse to disclose the contents of the proposals slash statement of qualifications during the discussion. So I think it is kind of discuss amongst yourselves before you start...
But not to the public?
Correct, correct.
Until we pick one?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Go on, Andy, sorry.
No, you're fine, so, um, did he settle on the date?
Oh, the date.
The proposal submitted?
October 2nd, I guess.
That was to have been submitted, turned in, and then start the committee review process?
Correct, if we wanna follow this lead, we're talking September 29th. I just thought, well, I'm on the 29th, I'll, I'll go with the first, but, but if we wanna follow the lead, it's, so I'm going with either the first or whatever you guys determine.
2nd.
Have you, you see that?
She's, she's there.
Nick has put down September 29th.
Oh, September 29th.
21th is a day different.
That's fine, that's Friday, check.
I think we go with Nick's advice.
Yeah, we say...
Well, yeah, October 1st is Sunday off. So, so we're doing, instead of the 15th, 29th, so then the committee would then have their recommendation to the town council at the October 16th meeting instead of the 2nd? Because unless the committee's getting together, it's been in the weekend somewhere.
Hey, that sounds good.
Yeah.
I think that sounds good. Give them some time.
What time is, um, office is closed, or do you want to...
4:00.
4:00, you want like 3 o'clock on the 29th?
Sure. I'm not sure, it's the, there's a certain... I don't know, just having a meeting appears this way. So our key, it was, anyway, is it in the mail, or is it constant? Uh, she just emailed, or she just texted, I don't know. It's, there's, I, I, it doesn't, it's okay. We tried.
And then if the proposals are due by the 29th of September, Tim, when would you want the cutoff of questions to be? Cause I imagine what would need to happen is questions need to be given enough time to be received by you or reviewed by the committee and an answer given before the 29th minute of due, proposals reviewed.
When September's happening between?
Yeah, a couple weeks before, like two weeks, like the 15th?
Yeah.
And then there's, it's in here today, we posted on its town website also, um, I have a plan where we can have it.
Yeah, that's fine. We can do that.
Say that they be posted by Monday the 18th, if they're due by the 15th?
And it's fine. By the end of the day on the 18th, so have fun too.
And I'm gonna, they're doing, uh, electronic PDFs of proposals stating their qualifications, um, must be submitted via email to Tim, I guess.
Yes.
All right, I think that's all, I think as far as RFPQ goes, that your overall alignment is that maybe this stuff will get filled in. So if the town council wants to move forward, then you would be, there would be a motion perceived by RFPQ as amended here, so.
Any other discussion?
Uh, I just wanna say that I voted against this, I'm still against this, but I think we ought to put this process through and see what we can get. So I'd make a motion to release our, what is it, RFPQ.
So John made a motion to sign the RFPQ and release it as amended, um, as we talked about.
But I still agree.
Is there a second?
No, sorry.
Are we seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion passed?
Yeah, I will give that to Nick, I'll give it up to Nick because he probably has this as track really well.
Is that something I have to sign or is this just?
It's actually, there's no signature on it.
Okay.
They, they were running in favor.
And I'm pretty sure that Nick mentioned to us at the first meeting we had that he has a hit list of work. I mean, I don't know if you guys attended, if you guys know where to send this so that anybody, everybody gets a look at it, gets a chance of arguing when, I don't know where that comes from, Gina, you or somebody in your office, maybe. If you emailed out, I don't know if he's got what I call hit list, if he's got 20 people out there that he sends it to, I think he mentioned that to us at the first meeting that we had with Nick was present.
Oh, that's something that Mary does. Mary before he sends it out to the two of us.
Mary has that list.
That's right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I guess you can just stay there for a second.
I can, thanks.
Um, I'm just gonna skip Johnson Mobile Home Park since we're talking about this sewer, just go ahead and move to the next, uh, resolution, 2023 dash four, resolution creating the, um, buy, it's buy, operate, transfer, right?
No, operate, transfer.
Bill, I'm sorry, build, operate, transfer committee. So this is a resolution that establishes the formal committee, uh, which is the RFPQ committee and, um, and this is the committee then will, that will review the, um, the bids from, uh, the engineers. Uh, this committee shall publish appropriate public advertisements, release the RFPQ, review responses from officers, meet with officers, off, offers as needed, and provide a recommendation to the council and then any prior committees created by the council under Indiana Code 5 dash 23 are hereby dissolved.
I think, I hate to do this without Chuck here, but I think we need to take into account what Carla said about Chuck being on the committee.
I, I, thank you, I agree. Um, but before we move on with this, can you re, uh, say what you told me about who should be on the RFPQ committee? This particular one, do you remember which?
Well, I mean, so I'm coming into this process after the ready grants already on the group, it's my understanding that there's been an informal group of people talking, that have been meeting, that I got to meet with, um, so, I mean, I think people that are familiar with the project, familiar with the process will be beneficial to be on this committee because they're ultimately gonna make a recommendation to council, but.
The way I, the way I understood what you said, it would, that this committee, um, this formal committee should be more of like maybe technically oriented people or people that have been through the process before, um, stuff like that. And like, I wouldn't be helpful on the committee because I don't know what I'm talking about, um, but that, that's kind of what I got, so, um, I kinda did some brainstorming and thought of, and you said three to five people would be ideal? So I was thinking, um, if we could have Tim, of course, and, and, um, that would be good. And then our, our previous, uh, sewer supervisor is Kurt Rehman and, um, he agreed to do it as well, so that would be two like technical people. And then we have Todd Facker who's obviously been through the BO2 process before that's, that was on the original committee, is a redevelopment commission president. And then, um, John, because he's a councilman and he's already been on the committee. And the last one, I was thinking maybe Darryl Kramer, uh, he is on APC, he's in the county, he's been on it for quite some time. That would be kind of like a county rep to kind of help us through it. I don't know, anybody feel about that?
What is this for? He, this is the one that we will see the proposals and?
Yes.
What about, what about Derek? He kind of represents people up on top of the hill.
Well, the way that, that I kinda was talking with Andy and kinda talking with some others, it, it, it just, this, I think it's important that we have representation on the hill to know what's going on, like maybe informational, like there's no reason why that initial committee can't keep meeting with all those people, because the more people that know what's happening, the better. But this smaller, more tight-knit commi, uh, committee, more formal committee would be the ones to, uh, to look at all the bids because everybody at this committee would be bringing something to the table, um, instead of just informational purposes and that's, I think we should keep doing that, but I think actually for, to review the qualifications and the proposals, I think it should be people with a little bit more experience.
I'm, this is my group. I'm sorry.
In my group. Just hold on. Do you have any input? No, but yes, oh, sorry.
I wouldn't say it was a request from, uh, in action, I mean, I have representation from the hill and that's why I engaged Derek because I thought he, he would, and my concern was to make sure he represented the hill, anybody for that matter, because there are a lot of people who are up there beating on the drums saying how quick, I want it now. That's a question that a concern needs to be addressed and there's some people asking how much that needs to be addressed. Is it gonna be three? Do I have to hook up? A lot of questions, but regardless, um, I think changing out Chuck for Darryl Kramer and getting the APC involved is, is, I think somebody from the area planning commission needs to be involved, okay? Uh, so I think that works, but as far as, uh, representation on the hill, the only thing I could say is, Tim, is, is, uh, Kirk live on the hill?
Yes.
So Kirk does live on the hill, now whether that factors in or whether Kirk, I don't know, I just know that I, I was questioned, just like Chuck's been questioned, Derek's been questioned to me, why? But I believe that he sits on my county redevelopment commission and I think that those five people have enough mindset to make sure that someone isn't pushing us in one direction, that we're all looking at this. I think so far it's been very well done in the first two meetings with the committee, but I'm not here, but you guys are selecting a committee and if it wasn't, it does, in my opinion, it does need to be an odd number. If it turned out to be, it was six originally and if, and I was just going, my suggestion would be if there was a vote to be taken or considered, a vote to be taken that would take four yeses, don't care how many people show up, I'm on four yeses. So if only four people show up, we need four yeses. If three people show up, we don't have a forum, whatever the case may be. That, I can tell you, SEI already had six people on the team, it takes four yeses, period. Any project would get, the forum consists, it wasn't this forum, two to one, it took four votes across the board and I think that is important to make sure that you've got the majority of those people on the same page. So your decision, whether you want Derek on or not is your, your call, but I, I, I think they have representation from the bill, it's great. I think that, I, my, I just, I flat out would tell you, I told Derek, you got the worst job because you got six people sitting on your porch when you walk home and half of them are telling you what not to do and half of them are telling you what to do. I feel sorry for them and they're taking all that responsibility because there are a lot of people on that hill that can't wait, but they have not showed up at these meetings.
Yeah. Uh, Andy, have, the six, I mean, I know you said three to five is, what, what's the ramifications of six?
Three, three times.
Yeah.
It's gonna be odd, it's either gonna be five or seven.
I think, I think we need some way you have Derek on there.
How do you want to get it?
Five.
And I can give, I will give you a quick little, for instance, would be in the event that we were determining whether there was revenue left over to help hook people up, I think that decision and that discussion is something I wouldn't want everybody on that hill here or understand. So that, maybe my concern with my representative is you gotta zip your mouth shut here to some degree because if we're talking about, hey, we can, we, we got 300,000 bucks left in the hat if we use mechanic A, that we could use to help hook these people up or we don't have it, I don't know, but that's the dangerous portion of that.
Well, he's on grid, that mission, so he's used to that.
Absolutely, we know, so he's moved to it, but.
Is there such a thing as having five look an alternate to, to be in the discussion with everything, but, but only vote if five aren't there or if they don't have a forum?
It seems, I just, it seems, I mean, you could have five of the next official member that doesn't have a voting rights. I mean, I, my, I have one board that has to meet the number of people and it can be a real pain. Odds are, are easy because it's easy to draw and for you to, you know.
Okay.
The problem I see with this is, he's not afraid to make a phone call, he's not afraid to ask questions and, um, I think that that's important to have somebody on there that's like that and he's come this far unless he takes it very seriously and not that Kurt Rehman isn't a good person for him, he does live up on the hill, he's had experience with the town, I think he would be a good addition, but I think you take Derek off there and even have him as, as an alternate is a mistake or really you.
Thank you.
Or you just leave him on, here's your six and you can offer another and have seven instead of five.
I, I think seven would be fine.
Okay, there's never, I mean, we have to, we have to put him in if we're gonna prove this today.
Do you have a recommendation, Bill?
The only, I, a contract, I, I actually, I spoke to Mr. Kramer about that situation and also we spoke to Tom Regal, who also expressed some interest in it, but he has some, uh, personal family matters that he's involved in quite heavily and so he basically expressed an interest. So the fact that none of this takes place for 30 days, I mean, I would say that you could, if you guys were okay with both of Todd and Darryl, you could appoint them both and then if for some reason somebody don't make it, they don't make it, I don't know, but I, that, that would be my suggestion. I would also suggest that, I'm gonna say it on bylaws, but the bylaws for SEI ready says it takes four yeses, so if only four people show up and you have a forum, I still believe that would be the best interest of the people within our community, that all four of you are on the same page and it doesn't turn out to be three-on-one and two-on-one, I still think that's something that would be, so seven, six, don't matter to me, I like to see four, but my recommendation would be four votes and I would ask that you put Todd and Todd Regal on there in conjunction with Darryl Kramer.
I agree with that.
And, uh, can we replace people just before they actually meet, if that's a problem?
What's that, I'm sorry.
If we put someone on tonight that in the end can't, can't serve, is it a problem to, to switch people out?
You guys do a new resolution.
Okay, well, we'll just have to cross that bridge.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got, um, it sounds like we have, um, okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, oh, uh, Darryl. Okay, so, um, it sounds like we have John Estrich, Tim Reddell, Kurt Rehman, Todd Facker, Derek Cole, Todd Regal, and Darryl Kramer. Does that sound?
That's the one you're removing Chuck from?
Well, it's not really removing, we're really just establishing a new committee, a formal committee, but yes. You good?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as Derek's on there, I think he represents the people, so.
Yeah, okay, sounds good. Okay, so, um, res, so, yeah, I already read the resolution, we have the committee, I just entertain a motion to approve the resolution 2023 dash four, uh, to establish the committee for the sewer extension project with the seven members that I previously announced.
I'm making that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Now, should I write these in? Is that?
Yeah.
Bring it to the table.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just a little confused, it's unusual, but, so Carla brought up her concerns and her request, it wasn't really an answer given either way. So is, are you saying now that this person that we talked about tonight is not going to be on this committee or is this something entirely different?
That's right, that's right, he's not on the committee.
It's a, it's a different committee, it's a different committee, but it's the committee that makes the decision or recommendation here.
Okay, so the issue that Carla brought up has not been addressed.
Hasn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, what?
My last sentence on that, if you explain that, that last sentence says prior committee, any prior committees created by the council under IC Code 5 dash 23 is hereby dissolved.
So that previous committee was dissolved.
Don't exist no more, they just announced a new committee.
So, right, and, yeah.
Yeah, the, the town has previously sort of on these BO2 agreements, you have to adopt the provisions, Indiana Code 523 first, Gina sent me the resolution, the town had already done that on prior projects and there was a prior committee established and I, in a short time knew that it wasn't the people that had been working on sewer projects, so that's why we had a new resolution tonight establishing a new committee with the members that are still in.
So you dissolved the previous committee and just created a new?
That's right, a formal committee now.
Yeah, for this sewer project.
Okay, good, wonderful. We can go back now to the Johnson Mobile Home Park, is the next thing on the, is the previous thing on the thing? So this is, um, anyway, I guess Andy's gonna talk more about this agreement.
Well, when we, when we did, uh, this, the informal sewer group, I wanna say committee, the group that was discussing the SEI ready and the next steps, um, councilman Campbell did ask, say, he was contacted by the owner of Johnson, um, Mobile Home Park, my advice previously had been, you know, it says, right now, it's my understanding, if someone can correct me if I'm wrong, there's one meter on the property and he's requested to put meters in each of the chairs, um, and I advised against it because they changed the law a few years ago that makes, you can't make the property owner, uh, you can't require them to sign an agreement for utilities with the, their tenant, okay? So if the tenant orders. So if the tenant orders stiff the town on their bill, we then wouldn't be able to go against the property owner. However, what Councilman Campbell said is that the property owner was willing to say that he would be, he was willing to sign an agreement, I am not talking to the property owner, but he was willing, so what it would really be, is he was willing to sign an agreement that he would be willing to sign on the bottom line.
Be liable, be liable for their bills.
That came through Chuck, I never did talk to Chuck about this.
So he said something to me about it, and Tim was standing there too, and asked Tim about it, but again, I haven't seen an agreement from anybody else, I haven't heard from the property owner, and I haven't heard anything else about it. So I was just, what I relate to, Councilman Campbell, just so everybody's on the same page, is, we can't require bylaw, but if they're willing to offer it, you know, if they're willing to say, yes, if my tenant insists you, I will make sure that the account is kept current, you know, by law means, if they're willing to do that, we just can't require, and that's where my advice previously came from.
Should we have a signed agreement, please, before we do anything?
Yes, absolutely.
So should we, if we relay that information to the owner, and he prepares an agreement that says just that, then we can entertain the idea?
Yeah, then there could be a discretion. I mean, I think it would really be beneficial for Tim to talk to the property owner, to find out exactly what he's proposing to do. You know, this person, I guess, who reached out to Chuck, I haven't talked to him, and Tim hadn't talked to him, he just caught us after we met about the sewer project.
Well, I know how your property owner come here to dream, discuss, so those of us who have questions can ask me.
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that too. Okay.
So you want to, on the, the?
To kind of, yeah, okay, thank you. Next is the golf course drainage design pre-proposal contract.
I feel like I should introduce myself, but I already.
You should.
Okay, one more time. My name's Adam Crow, I'm with RQ RV, we're here for our water waste water group, we also use our water design, which is why I am presenting this to you today. Does everybody have a, our copy, I printed out extras, but, okay. Would everybody like me to just run through the scope, or how would you like me to present the information?
Well, I mean, just kind of a broad overview, because I know, we talked earlier about the cost, coupled with the construction cost, that I'm not sure that we have put it in budget, but we are having budget meetings for next year, and, so yeah, if you can just give an overall, that would be, I think, better.
Yeah, sure. So we have an existing on-call with the town, and the first task over, the first little bit of work, was putting together some budgetary cost estimates for hole 14. The gist of the improvements that we suggested was improvements at the existing contention power, resetting the existing overflow structure, and then replacing the corri rate metal pipe going under, reservoir, if I remember correctly. So, that's just a budgetary cost estimate, to give you all the ability to plan, right, for the future, how is it going to be funded, how is it going to be bid or not bid, and after developing those cost estimates, we believe that the 2016 required threshold, meaning you do not need to bid the project, instead you can go to a solicitation for quotes from contractors, because I believe that it was 150,000. So, in our proposal, we have for you a complete survey of the site, topographical survey, so this would be like elevations, important below ground features, like utilities, gas, existing easements, it also does include picking up some critical, like some important elevations for hole 11, as well, that's included in this, because the survey was like, we can run up there and pick up a few more points, you know, not an issue. So, includes survey, that's kind of the beginning, it will include some confirmation of our design calculations, just to make sure everything we show on plans is accurate, and meets the town's expressed interest in like, what we've called in the past, level of control, doesn't mean 10-year storm, or doesn't mean 100-year storm, how big of a storm are we addressing with improvements? Includes the site visit, and try and kind of go high level, and then carries it all the way through to completion of construction, that's how it's organized, it's what we're going to help solicit quotes, you know, we work with the town to say, okay, here are your preferred contractors, we have our own that we've worked with in the past, we can help with that process too, and then we'll help you do coordination, communication, we'll collect the quotes, and then present it to the town, as we get it multiple, then we evaluate, you know, the completeness of the quote, not a bid, and can do, including here's the due diligence, so calling by references, making sure that, you know, if it's not a contractor we've worked with in the past, then we'll call the previous project, see how it went for them, you know, kind of give you a preview of what the experience would be like for you all, if you go with that contractor. And then it also includes inspection, so that's full-time inspection, there's a not-to exceed amount in our contract. Inspection is, you know, an important feature, because unless you can have full-time attendance at a construction site, I guess the way I've described it in the past, is we, you know, as designers, we legislate, but we're not enforcement, so your inspector kind of provides that enforcement arm to a project, where they're looking at our specs, the way we show whatever the improvements are on a piece of paper, and say, well, designer said you need to do it to this spec, or, you know, you need to have this stone, inspector can make sure that it's actual, what's going into the ground, and is a representative of the town, you know, not, not all contractors are that way, but some may choose to, you know, shortchange, go with the lower quality stone, circumvent something that they thought was not necessary, so that's, anyway, that's inspection services, and we'd also help with construction administration too, which is like, a contractor will submit an application for payment, and so we'd review, make sure that that lines up with what the inspector on site is seeing, right, they're not asking to be paid 100%, when the project's not at 100%, and attending town council needs, and that's something that my team would do. So yeah, that's pretty much the scope. Then there's a completion date of the packet by end of September, so that carries you through to the item number two of the contract, which is the, gets you to the coordination services.
So the date, what did that date, what did you say, end of September is for what?
So that's you seeing an RFQ packet.
Oh.
So it'd be like a bid form, right, what the contractor needs to actually fill out, as far as pricing, and then you would also see like the design drawings, you know, what is the actual scope of work, all the details of the leadership, and we review that with the town council.
Does this project include what we talked about upstream, from the subdivision going across Curtis's proposed, the, that includes that?
Correct, yeah, we listed out, and we can kind of put ideas to that, because it helps go back to like previous project, but problem area two and three. Two was the recreated ditch down stream of.
And then that other side, that's coming from Mr. Heiss's property, we're gonna do that differently.
That was, we just did an assessment of what the cost would be, and what the biggest most cost was, and the simplest solution, we said, we don't need, we don't need to over-design, so we're gonna let the town, I mean, handle that, so.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, if you have any other questions, I don't, but I think what, when we go through our budgets here in the next couple of weeks, I think that we'll have a better picture of where we're at, at least this year, and if it's not in the, in the thing this year, it has to be done next year, so, in my opinion, in my opinion. But we have a lot of different sources that we're learning about, that we have on our fingertips, that we didn't know about before, so I think that this is just gonna have to, I think we're gonna have to consider this a little bit, in my opinion. Okay, yeah, so thank you so much for coming, and I'm sure we'll be in touch shortly.
Sounds good. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Next is 11th and 8th Street Crosswalks. So, we talked about the crosswalks, the new crosswalks that are solar-powered at the 8th and 11th Street, where we had an accident here a few months ago, and we had Indot come down, and they did an assessment, an analysis of what it all looked like, and they proposed a couple of different things. They proposed to put more paint, basically, on the street, that kind of indicated this is a crosswalk coming up, and they talked about, they recommended removing, I think, in a total of four trees at one crosswalk, and one tree at another crosswalk. They talked about putting a new fire truck sign at the 8th Street crosswalk, replacing the yield signs with the Indiana authorized signs, and so what we need to do tonight here is to approve their, their plan, and talk about if we want to remove the trees, I think is the biggest sticking point to me, that I saw, is that we would have to go into negotiations, I guess, with the property owner, or ourselves would be cutting the trees down.
And the trees that are in the right way, being the highway and sidewalk, what, how does that handle? That's where the trees are, that have to be removed from there.
It's city-owned right-of-way, we don't have a right-of-way, or town-owned right-of-way, it's not just a right-of-way over someone else's property, right? Town-owned right-of-way, that's what we're saying, how it's like, Indot, actually, should they? Indot, it's, Indot doesn't have any concerns about the tree thing they have now?
They're the ones that recommended it.
Yeah, they recommended, they told us to do it.
Yeah, they said they don't take trees down, that it's, it's part of the city's job.
Why not just trim the trees? Cut the lower branch down, have opening, make it sunny.
That's something we can discuss.
I do think that we ought to tell the property owners what's gonna happen, I don't think it should be just surprise to them that they see people change all stuff here.
I would hope that they could come to the board and address us, if they are, if they would like to, I'd like to invite them to come to our next council meeting, if possible.
Or we go to them, them, them.
Either, I mean, just so they have a forum to say their concerns.
Yeah.
I just didn't know how the board felt about allowing that to happen, or we don't want to cut the trees, or we do want to cut the trees, or?
If we don't cut the trees, I believe it's stupid to do, because it's the trees you can't see, and we're putting peoples, myself included, safety at danger, so, you know, love the tree, hate the tree, but cut the tree.
Earl, do you have anything to say about the trees? Do you want to trim the trees, is that what you're?
That's a suggestion, I mean, property owner might not want to cut the tree down, so I'm suggesting, the lower branches that are blocking the view of the signs, cut those off, if you still have the trees, and still get the signs up.
With, with the one lying about on 11th Street, it has to be a three-foot total.
That is, it could be an option, if I can give you Damon, Damon Bailey, is that his name? From Indot? He's the safety guy, David, Damon Brown, Brown, I'm sorry. Damon Bailey, wasn't he that? Yeah.
He's a basketball player, I believe.
Thank you, I'm like, we're, if you call, can you call him and kind of negotiate with him, and see if cutting the tree limbs would be still like?
Talking to the property owner, I would say first, they might not have an issue cutting it down, I don't know.
Okay, okay. I have a feeling they're gonna have an issue having them cut that, maybe not.
I think you need to go to the property owner first.
If you want? We can go to the property owners, I can, I have plenty of time.
That would be great, John, if you could go to the property owners in question, I think there'd be four, the three, and then one on the other side, and then one on that side, and then one on 8th Street. Yeah, okay. And could you invite them to come to the next meeting then?
I talked to the, the one.
Okay, yeah, yeah, if they want to come, then we'll, you want to just table this until the next meeting, would that be okay? So we heard from the property owners?
How many property owners, was it two?
Well, there's, there's three on this side.
Two, three trees.
So these three, and then?
Just one property?
Yep.
And just the one property over here.
Well, and then if you go to the other side, there's another tree on the other property, on that corner.
Okay.
And then there's a tree on this side, so that'd be three, and then if you go to 8th Street, or 9th Street, I'm sorry, I've been saying this wrong the whole time, if you go to 9th Street, it's, it's this tree, right in front of Brookfield Butcher. So there'd be four, so, okay, we'll go ahead and table that.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna table it, I know maybe too late, but I have seen multiple places throughout the state of Indiana and Ohio, they keep the flash in the light, and there's a pole, I may be mistaken, they know better than I do, but it just basically, it's a piece that sticks out, it's 12-foot in the air, and you literally wonder, it's on every one of those poles, and it flashes out.
I just wonder if they could do that, because it's a QS 52.
Okay.
And we have oversized layers on top.
If you were to table it, I just want us to maybe verify whether that's an option or not, because I think it's better than any other thing.
It is.
Next is Police Chief Mitchell, letters of recommendation.
I believe you guys have the letters, but I have, yeah, that's Lucas Richardson, he's been a law enforcement officer here with the town for nine years, he has taken on extra duties over the last couple of years, one was the general instructor, he's an emergency EVO instructor also, for emergency vehicles operations, he's also the training coordinator, he's also in charge of the act, he's willing to be our firearms instructor, I think it's the eighth of this month, he's taken on a large amount of duties, and I'd like it for my pen to start. Yes.
And, of course, it's not budgetary, but, is that, I'm sorry.
How much difference in pay is that?
I don't know, is that being five minutes off from order here, versus a thousand?
Probably by hours, so, we'll move it later.
So the side of the ordinance only says one sergeant, why?
How, is it, there's not very much of a difference in the hour of the rate, is it?
See, 2615 is sergeant, and 2565 is deputy, deputy town marshal, six employees. So where's, I'm sorry, are you authorized two sergeants, or I'm confused, there's only one sergeant on the side of the ordinance?
There are two sergeants, it's not a new position, it's just one of the sergeants when he left, when he came back, he didn't, he didn't get the sergeant's position, Sam Williams is a sergeant, the other sergeant position is never been filled, or as the tenants call it.
Why do you think there's two sergeants? Why do you think there's two sergeants?
Why do I think?
Yeah, because there's only one on the salary ordinance. I mean, is it just his history or?
Yes, the positions that we've had through years, years, sometimes we've had one sergeant. I can't make someone a sergeant if they're not capable of being a sergeant. I can't make anybody a lieutenant if they're not capable of being a lieutenant. But I do practice that when officers are working here, that they have a chance for promotion and move forward. So I need to make sure that I give them avenue, uh, to reach for. So for work purposes, we're not a big agency, but I have to do what I can do to drive out of them. Also, ten, fifteen years down the road, they might be someone who might be taking over the chief's position or why, for experience purposes.
So Gina, it's less than a dollar an hour. We got what, four months left in the year? So we're talking less than forty bucks?
Right. Um, I mean, I've already, like I said earlier in the year, um, I didn't budget properly because of the unknown in the department at that time. So we're already short called in then, but again.
How much are we short called in that?
I don't have my.
Oh, okay. Be on the spot for you.
Oh, we're like around forty percent, so just a little over the half a year.
And I guess I, I guess I just don't. So when, so Sam Williams just became a sergeant, right?
Sam's, uh, Sam's sergeant, since he's been in that case.
Fifty-six difference.
Yeah. Um, so you'll have him as a new sergeant and then another new sergeant?
Yes. Luke is your.
And so four, four people in leadership and then five people as a patrolman? Is that how that works?
Yes.
It's just a lot of people in leadership and compared to the member and that are not on leadership. I'm just, it's a, it's a pretty.
Well, something I see about that, not advance, giving them an opportunity to advance. So if they're gonna go elsewhere, if we don't, I mean, if they, if there's no advancement here for them, there's no reason for them to be here.
Oh, no, absolutely. I just, he has a new sergeant right now, that's Sam. I mean, he just became a sergeant, so. I don't know, I guess I just don't understand why you have two brand new sergeants together. Why, why, why Sam wouldn't stay on as a sergeant and get some experience first before you bring another person up to be a sergeant?
Sam was a sergeant in the army too, so it's not like he's, uh, having, you know, due to that position. He's been in that, uh, situation for a while, but his duties is one thing and the care is enough.
I don't know what the, okay.
Well, I'm usually for not going outside the budget, if you know. But I think this time it's just a small amount that, why not? And if you feel that he deserves to be advanced to sergeant, I don't have any problem with it.
I support the idea of advancing to the rank to become sergeant.
So Gina, can you, can you help us explain what the salary ordinance is? If if there's two sergeant positions, why, why aren't they listed on here? As two sergeant positions?
Previously, I don't, I don't, I honestly can't answer that. It's just five position where they made in that position. So I don't know that necessarily we have a number on each.
Well, under deputy.
I don't, do we have like a number of your laborers and all that too?
Well, you, under deputy town marshal, you have six employees, which are the six patrolmen. And then the chief and the assistant chief and then, well, the sergeant.
Do you only have one laborer at the golf course?
No, no, that's what she, well, no, and then she has four lieutenants for the fire, fire department. And that's the only other one with a number next to it.
We're not creating a Indiana law by putting such a sergeant on here.
I'm not a sergeant, I don't do.
And play one on TV. We have one.
Why not?
Can you, can you, can you help us with this?
I mean, we can make them all sergeants, actually, can't we?
Okay, so going forward, if you want a specific number of positions, we need to be able to tell with all positions.
I don't think we do. I just, I just wondered because one is and one isn't. He said there's two sergeants, but it's not listed, so I just didn't know.
Right, that would have been a typo on my part, but I mean, there was two, I just didn't put two, so.
Well, maybe you don't wanna put it because maybe he might come up later and ask for another sergeant. And we don't wanna keep having to update.
Generally, in my experience as I've been here, it was the position and the period after position. I don't think that necessarily included a number.
Okay, then then we'll just take out the numbers the next time we update, which is, doesn't have to be now. That's fine, okay. So he can make them all sergeants?
I don't think that, uh, and I'm not trying to argue that, but you're taking away the dignity of Lucas Richardson for nine years and the experience that he brings to this community.
The dignity, I'm sorry, Chief Mitchell.
And everything that he has accomplished by making, making a statement that we're gonna make everyone sergeant is basically taking that away from him.
I'm sorry that you took offense and maybe.
I'm not, I just think that's disrespectful.
You can work that out later. It was, it was meant as a fact of, of procedure because things are listed here, not, this has nothing to do with.
I made the motion to be approved.
And I, and I don't appreciate that.
Correct the decision.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I think.
What did you say, John? I'm sorry.
I made the motion that we approved Chief Mitchell's recommendation.
All in favor?
Agreed.
Motion carried. Next is the letter of resignation from, uh, the golf course superintendent. Uh, Town of Brookville, this is from Brett Bradley, our golf course maintenance superintendent. Please accept this letter as a notice of my resignation from my position as golf course superintendent with the Town of Brookville as of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. I am thankful for my time in this position, but at this time have chosen to resign to further my career. My last day will be August eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Thank you for allowing me to work in this position over the last year and a half. I wish the course well. If I can do anything to aid with the transition, please let me know. Sincerely, Brett Bradley. I want to take a motion to accept the letter of resignation.
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Resignation is accepted. Um, we just need to, um, also, of course, with, um, his resignation, we need to publish the vacancy internally as soon as possible. And then, um, can we, I'd also like to move to, um, advertise his position after the period, after the week for internal fills. If we don't get one, I'd like to go ahead and authorize Jess to, um, advertise for his position. Is there a second?
Sure.
All in favor? All opposed? So she can go ahead and advertise if she does not get an internal fill. And also, uh, we need a new representative on the S I R P C board. Brett was appointed to that position and they meet quarterly, they have food. Usually have breakfast food. I went once, it was nice. Um, so if you guys can think about that and maybe at the next board meeting or if you wanna have a citizen that might wanna fill that.
What kind of food?
You know, donuts and stuff, I don't know. Um, if Gina, if you can put that S I R P C appointment on our next agenda and maybe we can put a Facebook post out there to see if anybody wants to sit on that board for us. It's a non-paying position, sorry, so there's that.
Food.
But there's free food usually. And I think they have a lunch for the quarterly meetings. Um, I just have a few announcements. Uh, so first of all, the, the new, um, town hall police department, uh, we were approved at the APC meeting tentatively and we still have not been able to, um, meet all the requirements yet for the county to submit, to give us our, our permit. We're waiting for an email from somebody, um, to tell us that those gas tanks in the back are actually double walled. And so, um, they do that with a co-op to prevent vehicle or whatever environmental spills. And so we won't have to put a concrete barrier around and so they need that in writing. Um, the next is, uh, I guess that's not it. No, no. A lot of this stuff, it was for Jess to update us and she's not able to be with us tonight. Uh, one thing is I, I sent, I think I sent everybody an email. Main Street, Brookville, applied for a grant, uh, for the Eclipse as our community is preparing for, um, activities, uh, for the Eclipse in April of twenty twenty-four. Uh, Main Street is as well, so I submitted a letter of support for them to get that grant. Uh, for the preserving Main Street grant, uh, we had our third bid opening and we got two contractors. And our architect has recommended one. And so this next week, uh, the town and our grant administrator will be meeting with the property owners to discuss, uh, their new, uh, estimates and their five percent match. They have to provide a check to the town before we can move forward. So I'm hoping at the next meeting, we'll be able to, uh, approve that contractor and that grant. Um, and last but not least, we need to discuss, uh, I think we, we approved Rocky to take over as the town superintendent or the street. And so, uh, I think, uh, Rocky and Brent have discussed the transition period and, uh, Rocky's basically doing the job right now as Brent's on leave or vacation. So Gina just wants us to tell her, uh, if we want to start paying Rocky as the superintendent now, um, just give her a date like today or we wanna wait until Brent actually leaves and that's gonna be September sometime.
So it starts at the next pay period.
What's the monetary difference?
I need to start bringing stuff.
It's just this, okay, it's right here. Um, street superintendent is twenty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. And I guess Rocky would be a mechanic or equipment operator, twenty-four dollars and two cents.
Two thousand four.
Four bucks, four and a half.
Last day.
September.
September eleven, is that somewhere?
New September.
Yeah.
So we're talking, you know, six weeks.
There's a little fluff in that preparation.
Five weeks.
Does, I'm gonna, I'm, let's keep on this thought again. Is there enough blood to cover that?
I haven't run the numbers, but again.
Why don't you go ahead and start paying next pay period?
Is that a form of a motion, please?
Yes.
I guess John made a motion or moved to, uh, pay Rocky at the superintendent pay starting the next pay period. Is there a second?
Sure.
All in favor? Motion passed, next pay period. Thank you. That's all I have. John, do you have anything?
No. Yeah, a couple of things.
Great.
Think we need to acknowledge the lifeguard that was involved in the situation within the last couple of weeks.
I agree.
We had planned to do that, but Jess is not here. Um, I agree too. Let's, um, um, at the next, do you have any ideas or we can talk offline?
Okay.
Yeah.
Also another thing, I don't know if the town knows, but there's a huge tree down across the alley off Mill Street between Sixth Street and Seventh Street. I don't know if anybody informed you.
So normally.
It just happened today.
So I did that with Rocky, I just texted him, I said something down and he's like on it?
I just told him I went there.
Okay, okay.
And my wife told me she heard it this afternoon, so it just happened today.
Can you tell him? Tell, can you tell this Rockus?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. What else?
It's all I have.
That's it?
Uh, going back to the treaty question, you said that Indoc requested that trees be removed?
It's part of their safety plan.
There's a statute, that's what I was looking for. Trees may now be removed from the right of way in the state highways out of the department of the department and then only in accordance with the rules of the department.
So we need to get the number written?
Well, he sent us.
Yeah, if you want. We just need to clarify with them that what they've sent us satisfies what this statute says. If you want to run afoul and, or your system, but Indoc also.
Do you wanna call Dana?
Please.
Do you wanna call her?
Go ahead, you can call Dana. I'll talk to the property.
On state statute. Okay, great, thanks, Andy. Gina?
Yes, um, our insurance really long is coming. Um, I still have a couple that are working on finalizing them, but so I was wondering if we could do a special, um, possibly next Monday evening if we get the form to review the, the close. I prefer to go a deadline and get still fit by forty in that day.
That's fine, yeah.
Are you available by now?
Cool, next Monday evening.
A meeting for having a.
Evening fourteen?
A special meeting.
Should be.
Okay.
I don't know if we need you here, but I would not be able to.
Do we need you here? I mean, I've never looked at.
Most I know about the chances that I have.
Okay, I think we're good. I think we're good. Thanks, Gina.
If you have a question, you can always sit on the next and give questions.
Right. Uh, what time? Six, is six okay?
Should be.
Six? Monday the fourteenth at six P M at the, at the time. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Yes, go.
I hate to do this, but I'll put anyone on the spot real quick. Andy, because this board appointed that committee, where does that violate open door law? In the event that they wanted to look at this or talk to these people privately or behind a closed door or a vacation?
So just my position on, and I'll make some more data into it. I think the opinions that have come out of the Public Access Council and the opinions that have come out of actual courts may differ on this, but my, I'm usually pretty conservative with the door law and my position has always been as a formally created committee, then it would be subject to the open door law. Again, though, I, I do believe that, and I think that's the position the Public Access Council will be staying also. But I haven't had to look into it in a while, but by the court record, there may be a court decision that is contrary to that position. Um, but there was something in five twenty-three that did authorize a meeting with, you could, you could have a sit-down with these post-officers, uh, so.
That's fine, if you look at this, we've got a month before that, we sit at the street, but I know we have had people attend a meeting and it was public and it has worked out well. But I believe there could be a point where you're gonna need to close the door and have this committee, committee only. And I think there's a difference between volunteering to be on a committee and being appointed to a committee, in my factor of that. Thank you.
Um, I'm sorry, I have one more thing. I didn't realize that we had two payrolls and I skipped this one. Uh, we have another payroll that's ending, um, um, July twenty-ninth and that is sixty, uh, six hundred, uh, sixty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. And overtime is four hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. I move that we approve that payroll.
Sure.
All in favor? All opposed? Sorry, missed that one. Uh, there's no further business to come before the board. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Oh, sorry. May I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Yep.
All in favor? All opposed? There's no further business, this meeting is over.